The September thirteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting of Long Branch City Council will now come to order. Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
I'm here.
Dr. Lo?
Here.
Mrs. Wren?
Here.
Dr. Shelley, Jackson, Mr. Dangler?
Here. We please stand for the place of allegiance. Place of allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and never be destroyed.
The Long Branch Mayor, City Council, and Administration are committed to cultivating an environment of mutual trust and respect that, respect the values of the diversity of our community. We will strive to enhance the quality of life for all who live here by making Long Branch a desirable place in which to live and prosper. We will treat all members of the public with respect and expect the same in return. Madam Clerk?
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the public's convenience and voted as required by law.
Need a motion to approve the ordinance from the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It's a roll.
I'm sorry, roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wren?
Yes.
Dr. Shelley, Jackson, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Consideration of ordinance, public hearing, and final consideration. Zero dash twenty-five dash twenty-three. An ordinance designed, no parking at any time, north side of Morris Avenue, starting at one seventy-three, one hundred and seventy-three feet west of Second Avenue, ending one hundred and thirty-three feet west thereof. This ordinance was introduced on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and prohibits parking at all times on Morris Avenue from the north side, one hundred and seventy-three feet west of the appendix of the northwest corner curb, curb line of Second Avenue and Morris Avenue, ending at one hundred and thirteen feet west. I need a motion to open a public hearing on this ordinance only.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. If there's any, any member of the public that has a comment to make on this ordinance only, please come to the podium, state your name and, and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once on this ordinance. Seeing none, I need a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the second and final reading of ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-three. An or, an ordinance designed, no parking at any time, north side of Morris Avenue, starting at one hundred and seventy-three feet west of Second Avenue and ending a hundred and, excuse me, one hundred and thirty-three feet west thereof. I need a motion to adopt the second, the second and final reading advertised according to, to law. Roll call.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sorry, roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wren?
Yes.
Dr. Shelley, Jackson, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Ordinance for introduction. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-six dash twenty-three, entitled, an ordinance establishing a nonprofit institution of higher learning, higher learning overlay district, M U O district, in block seventy, lots one, two, three point zero two, five point zero one, five point zero two, six, seven, seven point zero one, seven point zero two, seven point zero three, seven point zero four, seven point zero five, seven point zero six, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, seventeen point zero one, eighteen point zero two, eighteen point zero one, excuse me, eighteen point zero one, eighteen point zero two, nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one. This ordinance establishes nonprofit in, institute of higher learning overlay district for certain land currently zoned R-two and generally bonded by Cedar, founded by Cedar Avenue, Norwood Avenue, Kirby Avenue, Van Court Avenue. The overlay zone will, will permit the use and the operation of nonprofit institution of higher learning, including undergraduate and postgraduate educational facility and any activities traditionally, incidentally thereto, with the specific exclusions of dormitories and/or resident halls of any kind, athletic, athletic facilities, fraternities or sorority houses, educational services, including professional offices, training centers, laboratories, wellness centers, mus, museums, or, or theaters, buildings or structures cus, customary to hospitality management program. The ordinance furthers established area bulk and design standards for the M U O district. I need a motion to introduce for first reading, advertise, posted according to law and set for public hearing on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wren?
Yes.
Dr. Shelley, Jackson, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-seven, twenty-three, entitled, a bond ordinance providing a, providing for various twenty twenty-three capital acquisitions and improvements for the city of Long Branch and the county of Mammoth, the state of New Jersey, appropriating four million seventy-five thousand dollars therefore authorizing the issuance of three million eight hundred eighty thousand seven hundred dollars bond or note of the, the city finance department of, of the cost thereof. This ordinance provides for various capital acquisitions and improvements consisting of repairs, improvements to various roads and sidewalks throughout the city, the purchase of a beach tractor and rake for, for the city, and the purchase of various equipment for city, city hall and fire department. For further, you can please refer to the full bond ordinance for more complete description of the improvements and the purpose provided therein. I need a motion to introduce the first reading advertised, posted according to law and set for public hearing for September twenty-seventh.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wren?
Yes.
Dr. Jackson, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-three, entitled, capital improvement ordinance, improving capital ordinance for number, number oh, zero dash oh-five dash twenty-three. Final adoption of the city, for the city council, the city of Long Branch and the county of Mammoth, state of New Jersey, on March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, amending the, the title of the capital ordinance and the description of the improvements referred in the section two A therein. This ordinance amends the capital ordinance number zero dash zero-five dash twenty-three, finally adopted by the, the city of Long Branch on March twenty-second, to amend the title and description of the improvements in sections two A therein, to, to include various repairs, re, reconstructions to the firehouse, including but not limited to constructs, construction of sleeping quarters. Need a motion to introduce the first reading advertised and posted according to law and set for public hearing for September twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Roll, all, excuse me, roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wren?
Yes.
Dr. Shelley, Jackson, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Public portion and resolutions for the general, for general, all general comment. I need a motion to open the public hearing for the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. If there's anyone in the audience that has any comments to make, please step to the podium, state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening, Madam Clerk, requesting one minute notification. Vincent Lepore, thirty-three Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. Tonight, on a positive note, I and many others would like to thank Ms. Sue Ring of Long Branch for her leadership, skill, and passion in bringing awareness to citizens, both of Long Branch and elsewhere, of the ever-increasing harms of coastal industrial offshore wind farms. On September tenth, this past Sunday, Ms. Sue Ring, at an Ocean City, New Jersey rally against offshore wind farms, used the following words, quote, "We will fight," and stating, quote, "We are making our point known. We want to make our feelings known that we will fight." Many upon being educated by Sue Ring are now joining her fight in increasing numbers. Keep up the good work, Sue Ring. Keep up the good fight. Thank you, Sue Ring. On a negative note concerning Governor Murphy, Congressman Pallone, and Mayor John Pallone, all three should be charged with ecocide for their support of offshore wind farms, which will result in extremely long-term damage to the coastal environment and destruction of marine ecosystems. Both Governor Murphy and Congressman Pallone's attempts at greenwashing offshore wind farms by making false and misleading statements about the environmental benefits of such while discounting the harms, both have done so at the expense of their credibility, and both have been caught by New Jersey residents. Recently, on August thirtieth, Orsted Offshore Wind Farm Corporation announced a write-down of its U.S. portfolio of two-point-two billion dollars concerning New Jersey offshore wind development. That's right, a loss of two-point-two billion dollars. This after Governor Murphy, via the state legislature, granted Orsted a one-billion-dollar tax subsidy. Orsted attributed its losses to interest rates, more federal tax credits, and supply chain issues. The supply chain issue is Orsted's problems. They don't want to comply with one-hundred percent U.S. steel and forty percent U.S. iron. Orsted's claim that interest rates in the five to six percent range were harmful is ridiculous. A well-capitalized corporation would be able to anticipate, adjust to, and handle those rates. Obviously, Governor Murphy and Congressman Pallone did very little due diligence into Orsted's financials, both on the state and federal levels. At this point, Orsted, a for-profit corporation, has failed in further attempts to shake down more federal tax credits and taxpayer money. Orsted is now proving to private investors that Orsted is a failed profit-making entity concerning New Jersey offshore wind farm development. Billionaire investor Warren Buffett of Berkshire Hathaway stated the following about wind farm investing, quote, "On wind energy, we get a tax credit if we build a lot of wind farms. That's the only reason to build them. They don't make sense without the tax credit," end quote. Buffett doesn't expand upon the harm to American taxpayers and energy consumers for these tax credits. Similarly, Orsted's CEO, Matt Snipper, stated on U.S. offshore wind projects, quote, "We are willing to walk away from projects if we do not see value creation that meets our criteria," end quote. That value creation is more government handout. To Orsted's CEO, leave and take Governor Murphy, Congressman Pallone, and Mayor Pallone with you. None of yous will be missed. By doing so, CEO Nipper, you will be helping Long Branch residents and the residents of New Jersey in general to end junk government.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I need a motion to close the public portion.
There's a gentleman here who wants to speak.
Okay.
Is this regarding twenty-six, twenty-three, or?
Anything you wish. Just come to the mic, please.
Good evening, my name is Glenn Montague, here with my wife Teresa. We live at a seven fifty-two Van Court Avenue, which is block seventy, lot ten, um, in town here. We've lived here for thirty-one years. And I guess I have a few questions. I didn't prepare, think I'd be speaking. I thought this room would, there would be more people in it regarding this. And so I do have a few questions. My first question is, you know, we, we found out about this through social media, and I know in the past, if anything the college was doing, the university, we would get a certified letter in the mail saying, this is going to be introduced at council meeting this date, and that's how we would find out about it. I don't know who else found out about this, you know, and how else they would, but, um, that's my first question.
Sir, the, so the process is, this is just the introduction, this isn't the adoption. So it'll be introduced, it goes to the, um, planning board, they have to review it first, and then before, there'll be a public hearing on this. This is not the public hearing on it tonight. There'll be a formal public hearing, and you'll get certified mail notice of the public hearing.
Okay, appreciate that.
So that's, that's when you get the notice. It's, it's a two-step process. So it gets introduced, goes to the planning board, comes back, then you get noticed, then there's a public hearing, and then there's another vote, and that's the vote to adopt it. So that's the, that's what you, that's the certified mail you get. I think that you probably also get notice if you're within two hundred feet of applications specifically before the, the planning board. So one, if this should pass, and if the, uh, university then files an application, you'd get notice again.
Okay. So I guess I do have another question then also, is so, you know, the university is looking to establish this, um, this, um, higher learning overlay district, and, you know, my property is included in that district, and I don't know how they can, you know, establish an ordinance or want to, you know, to let, have an overlay district encompass a property that they don't even own. I don't understand, you know?
Well, it's, it's not, so it's not the university isn't doing it, it's the city's doing it. So the zoning on your property is not going to change. Your underlying zoning stays there. This is just, we call it an overlay zone, so it's an overlay on, on, on top of it. But all of the properties that are there that are not owned by the, not owned by the university remain unchanged. Your zoning remains unchanged. So your zone is, I think your, your zone is RR-three now, I think. Um, so if that's what it is, that's what you remain. So it doesn't change it. This is just an overlay zone, it's an option. It recognizes the fact that the university owns a lot of property in that area, but if the university should acquire any other property, it would just be subject to that overlay zoning also. But it also, yours, underlying zoning does not change at all.
How would the, how would this overlay zone affect my property?
Would not affect it at all.
At all?
No. Would only affect it if you sold it to the university, uh, but it wouldn't affect it at all. Your, so your property remains exactly what it's owned now. So it's a, if you have a conforming lot now, it's a conforming lot. If you went to put a deck on your house, you would still be conforming, it wouldn't affect it at all.
Okay. So I guess there's, I'm just kind of early to the party here, so this isn't even under discussion yet, this is just being introduced today.
Just being introduced now. So there'd be a, there'd be a, the planning board will review it, and then it'll come back, and there'll be a public hearing and a vote, and you'll get notice of that public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
How you guys doing today?
All right.
My name is Damon Colbert, I am the Vice President of Long Branch True Football and Chair.
Mr. Colbert, can you raise the, uh, mic a little bit?
Sure.
Thank you.
Is that better?
Yep.
My name is Damon Colbert, I'm the Vice President of Long Branch True Football and Chair. My reason for coming here today is I just want to give you guys an update on our season, and again, to tell you thank you for your support, um, and resources that you've given us in order for us to have a successful season. Uh, we got over a hundred kids, ages five to thirteen, um, that is football and that is cheerleading. We gun flag football, we have a nine U, and we have a twelve U. Our flag football is undefeated, our twelve U, our nine U is one and one, 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 one and one, and our twelve U is two and one. So we're having a successful season, we're doing very good. We had to start all over, we had to buy new uniforms, we had to buy, we had to get new helmets, new shoulder pads, new everything, all the way from the ground up. And we was able to do that with your support. So I just wanted to come here and say thank you, um, and we're having a great season, and I just wanted to give you guys that update. We appreciate you, and, um, thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm going to.
Daniella Bryson, um, Long Branch resident since twenty-two, two thousand and one, but even prior to that, before becoming a homeowner. Um, my question is, I've been noticing a lot more homeless and, um, school-aged teenagers on and about the Broadway strip, you know, during school days, school time, and things of that nature. I just wanted to know if there's anything that's being done about that situation, and does anyone know what's going on and why? There are more and more, they're like panhandling on Broadway. Does anyone know anything about that?
You said there's school-aged?
School-aged teenagers, young males, maybe. I want to say from the ages between twelve and thirteen, so about twenty, twenty-five, more and more of them are showing up every day on Broadway, panhandling throughout the day. And I'm not saying this because I want them to be removed, or I just wanted to know, did anyone else notice, and is there anything being done about it to help them?
Director, are you?
Well, recently, we haven't received reports of, of juveniles, uh, panhandling. Uh, we do have officers who are normally assigned, uh, to that area, in the McDonald's area, especially during, uh, you know, school dismissal, uh, but we haven't received reports of, of juveniles, uh, panhandling.
I've just been noticing that there's been a larger number of young people of, you know, school age and young adult, young male adults. And I'm not saying that because I want there to be more of a presence to remove them, I just noticed that Long Branch is becoming more of a hub for people who do not have residence, and I guess, you know, are we doing anything about affordable housing and increasing it here in Long Branch, so that, you know, there'll be a place where people who don't make that higher scale pay, pay scale have to go to be able to live and not have to be on the streets panhandling? I guess not.
Well, you want me to answer, Paul? Well, I, I mean, I guess the, the one thing I could say is every, every project that the, the city does, the city does look at affordable housing, and there are mandates for affordable housing in the various units that are being developed around the city. Uh, so that is something that the, the city is, um, you know, moving forward with on a regular basis.
Okay. All right, so. I also know that there is a very small amount of like after-school care and after-school programs, feeding, you know, like, programs where people who are less fortunate can go and receive services, whether it's a, a hot meal or someplace to go when the weather is going to change on us quickly. Is there some place or something that we have that I'm not aware of?
Well, you know, and I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm having a hard time understanding. It's not you, it's me, I just, I don't, I don't hear well. But, um, so the, so if, if I'm clear, the question is, do we have services for the homeless and, and things? Okay. So, uh, I mean, as far as food, let me just start with, you know, uh, with food, we have several, um, there are several, uh, food pantries, uh, throughout the city that are staggered in terms of times and so forth. They're not, they're not, we don't, we don't provide it ourselves, but we serve sometimes as a resource, uh, as an umbrella agency for it. In terms of, um, in terms of affordable housing, and again, this is not homeless, we've, you know, every new development of a certain size or every project of a certain amount, the developer is obligated to provide one or the other, a monetary reimbursement to the city, or, uh, provide affordable housing. That doesn't necessarily address the situation with, with the homeless. As far as the homeless in terms of housing and so forth, I mean, that's pretty much account, the, a county program, not the municipality. So for example, uh, but if someone is homeless, uh, on the, um, let's say, in, in the cold weather, you know, we have a Code Blue, which I'm sure you're probably familiar with, um, so we will, uh, make preparations with the county that that person gets the, you know, adequate housing, whether it's at a motel or wherever it, it is. And the other thing is, I think the director could talk to you about, are, are police department are constantly on the lookout for those who need help, who are on the street or the train station and so forth? You know, it's an ongoing problem because a lot of people do not want the help. I don't know if you can elaborate on that, Director, but, uh, but that, I, I mean, that's pretty much the situation, unless somebody has something else to add.
I can say, I could just, I guess, time is up, but I could just, uh, say that Trinity A M E, um, they have a, a food bank, um, see the Tuesday or Wednesday, uh, Second Baptist has meal at noon on Saturday, it's a hot meal, and every Wednesday, right in front of the train station, um, I believe the name is, uh, Food Not Bombs, and they have fresh vegetables and food, sometimes they even have hot soups and things like that. Um, you just get in line at six o'clock, there's no question whether you live in Long Branch, if you're homeless, whatever, but, so those things I do know, uh, are current, they've been going on for several years now.
Forgive me, this light is giving me.
In the year, and I'll just say one last thing too, in the years prior to COVID, uh, the city did run, uh, warming centers at various locations that were run pretty much by volunteers, that the police were, you know, were involved and present to keep everything safe. But, um, that kind of changed during COVID because we couldn't put, put people together, we couldn't get volunteers and so forth. And that's why we reused with the Code Blue program with the county, where anybody who needed some assistance, they could either call the police department, the police department would actually reach out to the individuals on the street and find them placement at least during the cold weather.
All right. Well, I did notice that, you know, of course, the houses and, and the price of everything is rising, a lot of the residents are being priced out of living in Long Branch, so I just wanted to know if there's anything that we're doing to assure that those who have been residents here can remain here.
Yeah. But I mean, in terms of, go ahead, Bill, I'm sorry.
No, 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 the, the five-minute time, time starts up.
Okay.
That's, that's all.
Five minutes.
We'd be happy, if you want to stay a little after, we'd be happy to talk to you too.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Need a motion to close the portion, the public portion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Madam Clerk, were there any changes? Get a list of resolutions? We can take the list of resolutions as a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Viera?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Wren?
Yes.
Dr. Shelley, Jackson, Mr. Dangler?
Yes. Applications there are none, miscellaneous bit, business for the good of the order. Councilman Viera?
Yes, good evening, thanks for coming out tonight. I just wanted to make a shout-out to the, um, all the people that worked on our beaches this summer. I know they had some tough calls and everything was good, and they, I know they worked real hard this summer for, as they do all the summers, and all our first responders, say thank you to them, they deserve it. Say thank you to them, they deserve a big shout-out to them. With that, good evening, good night.
Councilwoman Wood.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanted to pass along my regards. I was not able, because of a conflict at work, I was not able to attend the ceremony for nine eleven and for, particularly for our local residents and families, um, that were affected by that. So just to pass along my gratitude, my admiration, my love, my support, um, for them for what happened, uh, to our country on that horrible day. Um, and with that, let me wish you all a good next two weeks, and hopefully we'll see you two weeks from tonight. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wittis?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out this evening and for your comments, and I also wish you a good two weeks. Thank you.
Mayor Pallone?
Thank you, Council President. I just had a couple of events that, that are, we have coming up, uh, both soccer and basketball registration is currently open, so please contact the, uh, recreation office for any young people who are interested in that. We have a couple of events, um, so on Friday, it's not this Friday, but next Friday, September twenty-second, uh, we're having a classical music and high tea event, uh, at the Arts Center. Um, so this is free to everyone, and you can listen to classical music, we're gonna enjoy, have an art presentation, and you'll be serving, uh, served pastries in a seeded tea, which is going to be quite nice, and we're looking forward to that. Um, next Thursday, the twenty-first, that's before the event I just mentioned, uh, there's a comedy, uh, show at the Arts Center, and I think there's five or six comedians, uh, that should be pretty, a lot of fun too. That's the second time that, uh, we've had that. That's at seven P M. at the Arts Center, that's next Thursday, the twenty-first. And then Long Branch Day is Saturday, September thirtieth, from one to four P M. at, uh, Slocum Park, that's the whole municipal complex here, which is one of our bigger events of the, um, of the year. Director, if you don't mind, could you mention, because I don't know, I know it's next Thursday, the event that's happening at Covenant Church, could you mention that, uh, that's seven P M. on the twenty-first, but?
Yes, we have an event at Covenant Church, uh, where we're, where we are providing, uh, threat response training, active threat response training. Uh, it'll be at Covenant Church on Thursday, the twenty-first, at seven P M. Uh, we're asking, uh, and, well, this is really for church members, uh, any member of a church, uh, we have it on our website, uh, sign up. You know, we want to get as many people trained, uh, as possible.
And that's also, uh, was it sponsored by?
Sponsored by, sponsored by Covenant Church.
The Jewish Federation of?
The Jewish Federation and the city of Long Branch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, just in regards to the, um, the question or concern, rather I could say, um, with the young people out on Broadway, uh, most of those, just, just informed that most of those, uh, young people are out of school, that doesn't justify them, you know, panhandling and being homeless, but they are not, uh, high school or middle school age kids. And, uh, after-school program, the school system, and I don't, I, when I answer for this, like this, I'm not a spokesperson for the school system, but there are after-school programs for all, all children, um, for the Long Branch school system, as well as the Boys and Girls Club, they also have an after-school program. Um, I'm not sure what time it ends, around five or six o'clock, but I'm not positive. But there are a couple of programs that I do know of. Uh, with that being said, I would like everyone to, uh, continue to be safe, and, um, public service, you, I'm sure you've heard that the COVID is an uptick, whatever that means, so just be safe whenever you can and keep your mask at least available if you're in crowds, just to be safe for yourself. Um, and lastly, thank you for coming, uh, all be safe, and God bless you, and good night. Nope, not a good night yet. I need a motion, I need a motion.
Some move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, thank you. Is there a, yeah.